Okay. I'm gonna call our May twenty-second meeting of the Altadena Library District, order trustees to order at five oh seven P M. As always, we will start with our land acknowledgement. The Altadena Library District acknowledges its presence on the traditional ancestral and unceded land of the Gariino Tonga peoples. Altadena is located on the stolen homelands among the tribal band. The traditional territory of the Gariino Tonga is referred to as Tonga Land Gar, which includes the areas currently known as Los Angeles County, Riverside County, West San Bernardino County, parts of Orange County, as well as the four southern Channel Islands. Entities such the U S government and non-native settlers have subjected Gariino Tonga peoples to historic and continuing justices, genocide, forced displacement, and cultural and linguistic erasure. Altadena Library commits to learning, educating, and informing its staff and residents, President de Altadena, about the rich histories, vibrant communities, and culture of Gariino Tonga people, present and past, collection of resources, and programs offered. With that said, I will take a roll call, trustee Lynn, your trustee Andrew, Clark, trustee Wilkerson, and I am here as well. Do we have any reordering, proposed reordering of agenda items? Okay, may I get a motion to adopt the agenda then?
I move without the agenda.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote to adopt the agenda, trustee Lynn, trustee Andrew, trustee Clark, trustee Wilkerson, and then as an I vote for me as well. Do we have any public comment on non-agenda items?
We do have one on this evening, a community member who's joining us, Mr. Jim Goodino. So after our policy, four policies, Mr. Jim Goodino will have three minutes to address the board. And then he will, I'll go ahead.
Am I on?
Yes, sir.
All right, good evening, and thank you, District Board, President Capell, and other trustee members. I'm James A. Gaudino. I speak tonight on behalf of my ninety-two-year-old mother, Elizabeth Jane Gaudino. She is the sole owner and longtime resident for seventy years on two contiguous plots impacted by Measure Z taxes. No, my mother and I never received any announcements about the hearings last year. We found out when she received a letter about paying the taxes after the rules decisions were made. I'm close to retirement as a public health epidemiologist and professional and succeeding trustee for my mother. I've worked in government during years with many salary and retirement cuts, and I now retire hoping to stay in the lower-middle class. I bring thirty-five years of experience witnessing and studying impacts of health disparities and acting and advocating for equitable health protections and the highest quality of life for all people, especially the most vulnerable. My roots in Altadena's communities are deep and strong. I'm very grateful to have been born, raised, and lived on properties now being double taxed for Altadena's library district under Measure Z. I'm glad to say I too benefited from the services at the library, but I also acknowledge the legacy of white privilege and racism even in quiet little Altadena. For these seventy years, Mom has faithfully done everything she could to raise and protect her family, including me, my deceased sister, Charlene, and adopted nephew, and to be a responsible citizen faithfully paying property and other taxes to support our community and many government programs. This, this includes each year paying the original lump sum of the first district tax on both their properties. That's about hundred and twenty-five plus per year for at least twenty years. It's only because of Prop thirteen tax reforms that she and my grandmother, who is now deceased, could have remote, had the remotest possibility of even living and owning that property for the seventy years. But, but for an estate auction in the nineteen fifties, Mom and grandmother, as lower-income first and index Italian immigrants, would never have been allowed to own that property. Mom and grandmother also suffered losses, being victims of domestic violence, financial abuse, and divorce from their husbands, and major losses of my sister to cancer. As a woman of great faith, Mom has depended on her faith to make it and have faithfully stepped in and cared for all those people around her, including my nephew, now in transition. Now, measure, tax, the tax, Measure Z tax initiative provisions in current years, I believe this is not the board's intention, but the current implementation of the measure has ended up creating a regressive form of taxation, disproportionately impacting the most vulnerable like my mom. Mom and I do believe that this board can make needed changes to both assure that the revenue that you need gets in, as well as being much fairer in implementation. Ironically, the, the measure, ballot measure, stated that one purpose was to improve access for seniors and people with disabilities. So why force these nearly all low-income people to pay for that tax and for those services? As now we're a year or more in, in implementation, it's a good time, and I ask respectfully ask for a reevaluation by this board about this implementation. Please simplify the process. Current taxpayers, current taxpayers like my mother have spent, with assistance, have spent hours preparing those documents, asking for her exemption. She only got exempted for one of her properties, and, and she's very low income. Also, if, I'm not sure how I'm doing on time, but.
You're actually over the time, sir.
Can I just say a couple of quick points? The very low-income criteria just simply are ridiculous. How many people can live on a, actually live on a gross income of forty-one thousand dollars, one person, or forty-seven, almost forty-eight thousand dollars gross income in Altadena today? That needs to change. So I'm asking, for my mother's sake, that she get, that people like her, who have faithfully contributed to the Altadena library, all these many years, simply just get exempted. And other provisions, which I hope I'll have a greater opportunity to talk to you about. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the comment. Do we have any other public comments on non-agenda items?
We do not.
Do not? Okay. But we have comments on agenda items. We'll get to those as we get there. Okay, next is our consent calendar. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. Do we have any changes or corrections? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Some.
And get a second.
Second.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote to approve the minutes. Trustee Lynn, trustee Andrew, side.
Bye.
You Wilkerson, and I have an I vote for me as well. We did not approve any from consent calendar, so on to item number five, our departmental update reports. Do we? Comments in that are informational sessions? Does that make sense? Have for those departments of reports. Yeah, any feedback from the trustees? Now, I know we have our, our informational session on the summer reading program as well.
Just a comment from me, and that is that, as usual, it's really a well-prepared review. I think I counted fifteen pages, actually, in your report. It's just amazing, and some really good pictures and so on. So thank you so much, all that contribute, you and others, for for this sort of thing, because the visuals for me make a big difference in hearing the story about what's happened during the last month and so on. So thanks for that.
Yeah, I absolutely concur. Thank you so much for all the visuals. It's really, it's so fun, because I have my little printout of all the stuff that's happening, either the one Catalina sounds or the one we get in that you can have. And then, you know, to look at your report and see, like, oh, even if I can go to everything, that's, that's how it goes. It's really, it's really helpful. Thank you so much.
Okay. So who's doing the summary?
I said it on the stage. There were people who I didn't listen to there. Can you enable the turn?
So I have a quick question. So right now, with all the activities going on, that the van was out, was that van number one or van number two? And do they have names? Just one?
Volume one.
Volume one. Only in two within construction, right?
Right now, it's just a boring white van. Yeah.
All right. Hello, everyone. Good afternoon to everyone present here today. My name is Sophia Ariah. It's my first time actually being in person to this meeting, so I'm very excited to present today on our twenty-twenty-three summer reading program. Summer reading programs are more important than ever. In summer months, students experience summer slide or learning loss over the break from school. And our summer at Altadena Library empowers students to build their literacy skills through encouraging the self-selection of materials and through incentive programs. The reading challenge encourages reading during the summer for all ages, not just children. However, summer is more than just a reading incentive program. Instead, our summer at Altadena Libraries allows patrons to indulge in their curiosities to explore new interests through our programs and connect with neighbors of all ages at different events and programs. So I'll start with discussing the community reading challenge. Altadena Library District utilizes the website and application Beanstack to keep track of all registrations for the summer reading challenge. This challenge is for all ages, and we encourage our community, from babies to seniors, to participate. The online challenge is meant to be a fun incentive where participants receive virtual badges as they read. Patrons are encouraged to log reading minutes through their accounts on Beanstack, but for those that don't have access to technology or prefer not to use their devices, they can still participate by keeping track of reading through their paper logs. When registering for the summer challenge on Beanstack, readers are encouraged to reach the individual reading goal of, of reading five hundred minutes. And this is within June through July. By reaching the goal, they complete the challenge. And we also have a community reading goal to read two hundred and fifty thousand minutes of reading total within our community, which means that we would need five hundred people to read a total of five hundred minutes. This year, A L D has used iRead reading programs themed Find Your Voice, as you can see in the graphic. We use Find Our Voice in a theme throughout our programs, our graphics as well. And we use our voices to share stories, to express ourselves, and to spark change. Our voices include not only the sounds that we make, but the words we write, the art we create, the movements we perform, and the actions we take each day to impact our community. This theme can be found throughout our graphics. Also, it is a part of our poster that I'll talk about later that was created and will be distributed to the community members, first come, first served. Right, so now I'm gonna talk about the different prizes as part of the summer community reading challenge. There's many different prizes that you can acquire when you participate. When a participant first registers for the program, they will receive an age-appropriate book of their choice that supplies last. And we have purchased new books for ages zero to five, for children five to twelve, for teenagers, and for adults as well. When youth complete five hundred minutes of reading and log their minutes on Beanstack or in their paper book log, they can visit the library and receive their completion prize that supplies last. We have early literacy-themed bags for ages zero to four that include early learning flashcards, activity books, Play-Doh, bubbles, fidget toys, and a small stuffed toy wearing our Altadena library shirt. For children ages zero to five, they will receive a tote bag that includes three crafts and all the materials for their crafts to do at home. And for teens ages thirteen through seventeen, they will receive a tote bag with nice school supplies, just pencil bags and gel pens. They'll also receive a mug, different stickers, and candy. All participants of all ages that complete five hundred minutes by July thirty-first will be entered into virtual opportunity drawings. So for ages zero to four, there's an opportunity to win a kids-based membership. Ages five to twelve are entered to win a high, a fly, high adventure park membership. And teens are entered to win a pair of Universal Studio tickets. Adults will have a variety of drawings that they'll have an opportunity to win. So there's many great opportunities and many great prizes that were given out, but you might be wondering, how do you sign up for this? Well, the easiest way to sign up for a summer reading challenge is to join us at the summer reading kickoff event, which I'll talk about in just a few. But you could also sign up for the summer reading challenge beginning June first, either at the main library or at the Bob Lucas library, or sign up online on Beanstack by going to altadinalibrary.beanstack.org. To launch your summer at Altadena Libraries, we will be hosting a summer reading kickoff event on June third, two to four P M. This will be a carnival-style lunch party that will be held in the main library's parking lot. Bob Baker and Marionettes will perform something to crow about a musical performance. We'll have Love on Demand, Global Title for Poetry, The Tropic Food Truck, a variety of different crafts for all ages, free face painting and popcorn. And we will also have library staff stationed at the Curiosity Connection registering patrons into the summer reading challenge. It's going to be a very fun event, and we're anticipating a very great channel. So I'll now highlight a variety of programs that A L D will host during June and July. If you haven't seen this already, this is the summer information booklet with all of our programs that Brian created. A big shout out to Brian, and she put everything here together, and it lists all of our programs for June through July. So in our booklet, we staff categorize the different programs into certain categories, which includes performances, DIY and crafts, wellness, book clubs, gardening, literacy, and Find Your Voice programs. We have so much going on this summer, so I'm just going to highlight a few of the programs from each of the categories. Besides our performers during the kickoff event, we have a total of eight performances that will take place this summer, both at main library and Bob Lucas. And as you can see, we have a variety of shows, including magic, animals, dance, cultural shows, music, and also our first indie author night. Our community really enjoys arts and crafts, so we have a total of six programs for all ages, twelve programs for youth, two programs for teens, four Fab Lab programs for both teens and adults, and eight programs just for adults. I've highlighted here the Fab Lab programs. There are two programs on screen printing and two programs on Photoshop for film photography. We'll also have four STEAM lab programs for youth at Bob Lucas. And for adults, I wanted to highlight the Candle Making Workshop, Adult Craft Hour, and Crochet Club as well. We have a variety of garden programs for all ages as well. We have expanded our teen gardening club this summer to include a total of four programs per month, two during the week and two on weekends. This allows teens to receive more service hours, along with having more opportunities to care for our plants during the hot summer months. And we will also have a gardening program for children at Bob Lucas and two adult programs, one on main, one at main, and one at Bob Lucas as well. Our community is also invited to find their voice through wellness and health. We will have two programs for all ages, one program for ages ten and up, and one program for adults. And the image here shows our promotion for the yoga, Tai Chi, and Pula dancing program. There are a variety of book clubs that adults could be a part of as well. There are a total of eight, including No Gilt Book Club, True Crime All the Time Book Club, From Page to Table, and Drawn Together, a graphic novel book club. Those that participate are definitely going to be able to reach their goal for our summer community reading challenge, and they're able to log these minutes as well. We will have four weekly storytimes during the summer, including baby's toddler storytime led by Heather on Mondays, family storytime led by Diana at Bob Lucas on Tuesdays, Guantico's reading with a bilingual storytime, which I will be reading on Wednesdays, and preschool storytime led by Yvette on Thursdays. So we'll have a total of twenty-nine storytimes. We will have four additional youth literacy programs, weekly chest nights, and a murder mystery program for adults. And I highlighted here our Stuck Animals Sleep Over and Pick Up Breakfast as well, which is almost on the last day of summer, so that should be very fun as well. We also have Find Your Voice themed programs, two programs for all ages, eleven programs for teens, and three programs for adults. These programs include an open-mic night, teen leadership council, Smash Tuesday, video game programs for teens, a teen anime movie night, and I'd like to highlight a series of programs at Bob Lucas, Intro to Podcasting, Intro to Voice Acting, and Intro to Storytelling. I want to highlight our Freedom Quilt Passive Program from June tenth through June seventeenth in the children's area of the main library. Patrons are welcome to design a square for our community Freedom Quilt made of paper and decorated by the community. The quilt will be displayed from June twentieth through the thirtieth. Juneteenth observes and renews the call for freedom, justice, and equality in the African-American community, and our display will be a form of art and community engagement and awareness. We will also have information for historical context displayed as well. So I'll now highlight some of the programs celebrating Pride Month. From June fifth through the eighth, all of our storytimes will be Pride-themed. The stories read will embrace different families and celebrate every person for who they are. Books and storytelling are a wonderful way to build empathy and embrace diversity and inclusion, and we'll be doing so in our storytimes. We will also have a pronoun button program for teens on June seventh. And the image here is a, is the graphic for our flyer, which we'll be promoting. I also want to mention that the library will host the Altadena Pride Parade opening ceremony at the main library's front lawn on June tenth at ten A M. And there will then be a parade around the area, which ends at the senior center, and it's gonna be a really fun event. I also want to talk about the Find Your Voice artwork that was selected. So at the beginning of this year, we challenged our community to design our twenty-twenty-three summer reading poster with the theme of Find Your Voice. Several submissions were received, and A L D staff chose the poster seen on her slide, created by local artist Anna Kalinka. Anna is very excited to have designed our poster. She created the graphic, keeping our community in mind. The icons represent book labels you encounter while finding your voice in the library. We have printed posters of this design, and they will be given out while supplies last to those, to those that register for our summer community reading challenge. So we will be ending the summer with the end-of-summer reading party. This will take place on Friday, July twenty-eighth, from six-thirty to ten P M. The movie School of Rock will be shown at seven-thirty. But before watching Jack Black, Shred, and School of Rock, we invite the community to enjoy Shred Day, presented by Fender Play Foundation. At six-thirty, patrons can get their hands on musical instruments and have fun making music with the guitars and basses provided by Fender. And that concludes my presentation on our summer at Altadena Libraries. I hope that you are as excited as we are for an eventful two months at the library. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I had a question, I guess. Comment slash question, but I got, I think I'm the very first one to get this. Brian had it to me on the way out of your office the other day. So I took a look at it, and the one that seems really interesting is from page to table. That's where you cook a recipe and bring it in and share it with people, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm looking. Boy, that sounds really good.
Yeah.
Have you done that before, and how do you pull that off?
We haven't done it here, but I've done it at another library, and it's really fun. We usually pick the theme like, it's a holiday, we make a summer treat, and like pull out some cookbooks that are related to summer desserts or little dishes, and everyone brings it in, and each person shares and talks about which book they got it from with, within it, and lets everybody taste it. So it's really fun.
I predict that's gonna be a big hit, because everybody's so interested in cooking now, and the presentation and everything else. It sounds like a lot of fun.
Yes, I'll be taste testing all the ingredients, so everyone knows.
I mean, you've got to make sure it's safe for patrons, right?
Thank you for taking that on, Ashley.
And then the other thing I noticed is that we have two quilts going on, right? There's the one for the Altadena Town Council, and then this one's a separate one that you described, right?
Yes.
So that's really interesting, too. Good job.
I mean, for a library of roughly thirty-five staff to put together eleven pages of events and activities for a two-month program is, I mean, it's overwhelming for me. I can't imagine all of you that have actually done this. So, I mean, this is just amazing. So thank you.
I'm so excited to see it being on play. I know last summer, there was a ton going on. Like, we've had outstanding summer reading programs, but it's, there's something about seeing it all in one place together that's like, wow. My, my brain is melting. I love it so much.
Yeah, and this comes from the staff meeting monthly, starting in August. The soonest summer wrapped last year. We planned a monthly meeting and have been meeting from August through this month, once a month to come.
Well, you can tell, there's so much work in here. Amazing.
This is like, I got one on Friday. I went to the Adult Craft at Bob Lucas, and I was just, it's like a little magazine, and I love it. I have so many things highlighted and questions about things. I have questions about the summer reading challenge. One, thank you so much for the awesome pride lineup. I was talking to my friend, Reed, he was like, how am I gonna get him, like, jazzed up to read over the summer, because I don't know where this came from, but I really like books, and I'm like. So I was just talking to the tutor about how to get him encouraged, and he's always begging me to get a fly high membership, so I'm like, this is gonna be.
It's gonna be your game, buddy.
Yeah. Perfect to get him jazzed up for that. I'm, I'm also happy to see the variety of times of the program, which is really helpful, because we're not usually able to attend these due to, you know, schedule with school, and then, you know, soccer or baseball or whatever. So there's quite a few things that I can attend and he can attend, so I'm really looking forward to that. So thank you. I really like the way these calendars are laid out, so I can just go through and just, you know, see very easily what we can attend, and, and the pictures, and then just, yeah, the variety of programming is amazing. Like, you guys rock so hard. I think that was it. Then, what did I write here? Oh, do the storytimes count toward the Beanstack?
They do, yes.
I'm gonna beat points racked up.
Yeah.
A little ones, just they, their ages certified, but they're not reading. The grown-ups, the reading to them, that counts as reading, so storytimes count as well.
Okay, awesome. Exciting. Thank you. And it's beautiful, too.
Yeah, yeah. I like how all the little pronoun things look like ads, but they're not ads. They're just more awesome stuff in the library. It's very cool.
With that, we are on to our reports. Do we have reports from our support groups for tonight?
Not have. I need a word from joining.
Okay. I know there is a very large and successful book sale this weekend. I'm sure they're probably busy still counting their stacks of cash. I look forward to getting that report next month. So it's all you, Nikki. Director's report.
All right. So good evening, everyone, or good afternoon, probably. I will say with the friends, their annual membership meeting is taking place on Tuesday, June sixth, at six o'clock here in the community room, where their featured annual speaker is our very own trustee Lynn. So I'm sure that is something like this to share. That's my friend's report. So director's report, I am excited to announce that we hired Sandy Wang, who started with us on May fifteenth as our Youth and Family Services Library aide. She's close to getting her degree in library science, so great to bring on someone else who's studying. We have a number of staff who are getting their degrees right now, so. A number of staff who are getting their degrees right now, so um, so help me in welcoming her. Um, I did in my report, I couldn't state who got Teen Services Librarian at the time, but now I can share that. So we're excited to announce that um, Finley will be working with us again. We stole them back from Alhambra. They will be starting with us on June thirteenth and staff across the board are really pleased to hear that they're coming back, so. It's great. Yeah, excellent news. Um, so we continue to try to recruit for the Adult Services Manager position. Um, at this point, we've decided to pull it from the website. We're going to probably give it a couple of months and then try another round of recruiting. Unfortunately, those management positions have been really tough to fill, so. Ashley will continue to lead the Adult Services Team. Thank you, Ashley. One of her many hats. Uh, and we have received two to three um, paid internship applications. Our next step is going to be to conduct interviews just to screen uh, those candidates and are hoping to start them sometime in June. Um, as mentioned before, uh, the plan is for them to intern with us for ten weeks this summer, depending on what their school break looks like. At about fifteen hours a week, so excited to launch this program. Like I've said before, I've never. Been involved in something like this and they are paid internships, which I think is really great.
I'm glad to see we've got applications.
Yeah, yeah. Two to three, I can't remember, but we're still accepting them and if anyone's watching, maybe they're someone that might be interested. Uh, so our Human Resources Services Consultant, um, Addie Francisco has continued to meet with the staff focus group. I think they've met about six times where they've been looking at um, our attendance policy and our paid weeks of absences policy. Um, she did send us their redline version. The management team reviewed that last Friday. So we're still kind of negotiating back and forth and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to bring those updated policies to the board in June. Just want you all to know. Um, so in terms of individual development plans, staff continue to meet with their managers to review their IDPs. Throughout this month and identify the goals they'd like to achieve in the next year towards their own professional growth and development. Um, Jennifer was gracious enough to offer another training for six of us that missed the original training on March thirty-first. Which was good because it included a couple of new staff members that worked with us at the time, as well as an intern. Uh, we have an M I L I S student who's been interning with Ashley for the past six weeks. Yeah, so we we have her sit in as well to get some training on how to develop um, an IDP. So excited to continue to launch. The expectation is that staff will meet with their manager about their plan by the end of May. And then continue to discuss that each month during their work plan with their manager. Okay, moving on. So we did have our annual poetry and cookies, as I mentioned in my report, back on Saturday, April twenty-nine. It was a hybrid um, setup, so we had Peter, who's one of our poet laureate. Um, I believe in Washington DC attending from there. Uh, and there was about fifty people that came. It, I was just excited to see all of the great programs that were offered by the Poets Laureate this past year. I think they did a phenomenal job putting together a really good slate of programs, as well as collecting submissions on their their website. Which was the method this year. So I'd highly encourage you who haven't taken a look uh, to check out AltadenaPoetryReview.com. Or no, I think it's not work. I have to look. Um, so yeah, another successful event and thank you to both Peter and Farla for the work that they've done. Um, now they're on break, which I'm sure is much needed and will launch another series of programs, probably starting in August or September. So yes, it's not a typo. There were at least five hundred and twenty-two people at Second Saturday. Amazing. Um, back on the thirteen. Check out the picture, like that sort of captured it, but there were so many people there.
That's like pushing the like Farnsworth Park numbers.
Yeah.
Might even be more.
Yeah, I don't know how much that park holds, do you?
The amphitheaters.
Yeah, it's.
They said they probably sometimes get up to a thousand people, but that's everywhere.
Yeah, but upstream is super popular. I did include in my report that they are one of the Farnsworth fans, so if you haven't seen them, I'd recommend it. Um, and thank you to Trustee Wilkerson for her awesome intro of the band this month. I'm still looking for a June person. I think Jason said he could, but I'll follow up with you.
Somebody just got vulnerable.
All right.
Which one is this?
And it wasn't me.
That's a different one.
It's okay, you gotta cut. I don't get to.
I'll be in touch. You're you're my sticky note, Jason.
Oh, man, I really screwed up.
So um, I don't really feel like I need to go into much detail about SRV because that was a very thorough presentation from Sophia. But we'd love to see everyone at the launch event on June third at two PM. Um, and also excited about the Pride Parade starting up here. We did that again last, or we did that last year. It was a really great. Um, opening ceremony. I'll be speaking again this year, so hopefully we'll see you all at that as well. And um, there is a QR code that takes you to this whole book. So um, spread the word if there's people that would like to check out all of our many, many programs that are happening. And thank you to the staff for putting together such an amazing couple of months of programs. When they meet monthly, Catalina and I work the desk. And I think that's all. Now that's all I have. Uh, happy to answer any questions when I have.
I had a semi like weird question, the who, who's leaving the um, graphic novel club? Uh, drawn together. Is that going to be like a recurring event?
Yes, it um, every other month was going to start in July. And it's um, I think it's after hours, so we're more.
Do we want to, I mean, I don't know if it makes much sense to do the usual detailed overview of the financial report since we're talking about the budget anyway, but. Leave that up to you or trustees have any questions now if they want to wait for the budget discussion.
Well, do you want me to update like on what happened in April?
Yeah, yeah, I figured I'd just throw it out there.
Yeah, okay. So it should be pretty quick. It was a kind of uneventful spending month, to be honest. Um, so we're currently at um. These are the financials for April twenty twenty-three. Currently, we're at eighty-three percent of our budget year. Uh, year-to-date revenue is four million, three hundred twenty-six thousand, eight hundred six dollars. With uh, year-to-date expenses at three million, two hundred twelve thousand, eight hundred sixty-two. Which I like to point out because we have a net income of one million, one hundred thirteen dol- thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars. Um, so the combined total of our general funds held with class, Los Angeles County and checking is. Five million, two hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred ninety-six, which is well over, well over the required six months reserve that we need. Which is just over two million. The total assets right now, thirty-four million, six hundred thirty dollars and five hundred thirty-three. Too many long numbers. Um, in other words, looking very good financially. There wasn't much um, to point out that I saw in either um, spending or revenue. But as you can see, also line five, we made over twenty thousand dollars in interest again in April. So really happy to see that number increase by moving everything into class. And just so everyone's aware, we continue to monitor like how much money is sitting in checking. We're trying to leave just enough basically to pay bills and keep us functioning, but keep the money in class that's making close to five percent interest right now. So happy to answer any questions and we do have Christie, our accountant, online as well.
Any questions, feedback?
Yeah, I agree with that class comment. I think that thing has really performed well better than I think it was forecast when we thought on that.
Yeah.
I I did notice, and I can't point about that, there seems to be a slowdown in spending about, you know, right before the end of the. Big clean it was. Did you notice that too?
Depends, depends on the category, like um, one of the things that was way underspent was programs. But because it's summer reading and leading up to that, this is when a lot of the spending happens.
So that's a natural rhythm.
Yeah, yeah, because we were, I think when we looked at the end of March, we had only spent like fifty-eight percent and we should have spent more. But when we looked at historically, this is when a lot of the programming budget does get spent. So it just depends, whereas like um, library materials, we have to sort of cut off the spending. So the selectors are supposed to spend their budgets pretty much by the beginning of May. Otherwise, we don't receive the items to hit the books this fiscal year.
So when you receive is when you actually get into.
Right, because there's a thing, especially with materials budget, if things don't come in, you don't pay for them.
And that was.
Sometimes that happens.
That was the one I was talking about. We were under budget by sixty-eight percent on that one, on line forty-six. And I'm not, you know, I don't think it's a big deal, but it was sort of a rhythm I hadn't noticed before, so.
Yeah, so they'll they'll continue to come in through the end of the fiscal year and then you'll see that.
Okay, got it.
Other questions? All right. Well, that's a perfect segue into the Budget Committee report. I would just ask, since we have two action items as coming out of this later on in the agenda. Uh, I mean, folks are welcome to make comments or ask questions now, but um, it might make sense, more sense to hold that until we actually get to the action items. So I'm going to assume that everybody had a chance to read this. Um, so I'll just make a couple of comments and, you know, Boone, if you want to add, uh, please feel free. So I think, you know, similar to what Nikki said, I think we remain in very strong uh, financial situation. Um, but obviously, you know, we also, we're in a strong financial situation because of making smart decisions, right? And so I think it's important to continue to do that. Um, uh, but even with all that said, you know, we we're. Uh, feel confident in recommending uh, a four percent cola uh, for all of the staff. As well as some additional steps to the salary schedule. Um, this is, you know, an effort to continue to keep us competitive with all the other districts that are, you know, every, you know. I'm sure we we all know that it's a struggle to recruit and retain employees right now, so it's just trying to do everything we can to keep our amazing staff with us. What else do I want to add? The other thing I, you know, personally is is a big thing for me, because it's been a concern for a while, is I'm really excited to see us. Making a very significant increase to uh, the money allocated for staff to 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 get health insurance specifically. You know, I think we've just been way behind the curve on that and so I'm glad that we're able to put a dent in that. That's just a very personal comment. Um, and then the only other thing I would say is, you know, the the one issue that came up that that we asked. Uh, staff to just take a look at, um, you know, as Nikki pointed out, and this is kind of common. You know, our reserve fund is well above and beyond uh, what is legally required. I think that is good. We should maintain that. Um, but we have, you know, this year again, we have, you know. A decent little chunk of money that we're looking at um, being left over and not spent. And so what we asked staff to look at is that instead of adding that to the reserve is to think about um. Putting it in the fund that we are accruing interest to eventually pay down on some of the unfunded liabilities we have, especially around.
Yeah.
The pension and the retiring healthcare. Um, and then I know our our amazing accountants are going to keep an eye on that for us. For now, it makes more sense to earn the interest than like we would literally make less money if we've paid down the unfunded liability. Than if we just keep earning the interest, which is crazy, but so be it, right? So we're going to continue to do the right thing. Boone or Nikki, anything you guys would add, just coming with the budget report? Okay, and we can get to, we'll get to the specifics and questions and all that stuff when we get to the action. Okay. All right, so then we have the Redistricting Committee. Anything to add besides the actual presentation? Okay. All right, and then Katie, Facilities? It's just the report for the committee side. It'll be anything when it's put in the report versus. Okay.
Sorry.
No, you're good. You're good. There's a lot here.
Um, Facilities, so everything is pretty much in the report, but one thing I wanted to uh, update that has changed. Since when the reports were written a little bit ago is we have submitted the bill for round two grants. So that's we're seeking an additional four million and change um, from State California, so we'll see where we can be there. Hopefully they, hopefully they view that with enthusiasm. Um, but I'd be thanking to everybody uh, who spent a ton of time putting all of that together. The whole grant application and reporting process is a super time-consuming one. And I just want to commend all the processes that everybody has developed to keep that on track. Because we have to dot a lot of i's and cross a lot of t's. Um, the other piece that's sort of a little bit of an update since in here is. As you know, we're kind of in the design stage for Maine, right? We're mapping out what we'd like to have happen. Um. Bob Lucas is a little further along. And so as part of that process, now we are doing a preliminary kind of design phase cost estimating. To see if what we're imagining is possible actually seems to pencil out as possible. So we're getting back some numbers there. I think it will surprise no one to hear that in the environment we're in, some of those numbers are coming back. A little higher than we had hoped. So what that means is that we're going to look at. The entire universe of possibilities and maybe do some prioritization about what's possible to include, what's not possible to include. Basically, the approach that um, our capital project management firm has recommended, which we all agree, I think, is is a good one on the Facilities Committee. Is to identify those items that are going to be part of the base bid, things that are not negotiable, right? So accessibility upgrades, seismic upgrade, things that we know have to happen. And then bid out um, a number of of ad alternates. So ask all of the folks who are bidding on the project to say, okay, so price out for us. How much would it cost to do all of this plus add a new community room? How much would it cost to do all of this plus add? You know, a north patio or a mariposa. So we want to kind of see where those numbers come back. Um. But I think, you know, we'll have a much better sense a little further down the line once we get closer to that bid stage. But I just want to update you on kind of where, where everything's sitting and what the, what the strategy is behind that.
Well, thank you. And any questions? Okay. Tracy Andrews covering these on the report.
Yeah, that happened last week and I was in Sacramento for a couple of days. We talked about that at the last meeting. And had had we been there before at the legislative, is anybody? Okay, well, it was different than I thought and it was, it was pretty good. It was a valuable place to be, I think. Learned a lot. The first part, the part that landed in your packet was just me. Uh, typing up as much as had happened that day as quickly as I could to get to Catalina. Because I had a faulty program, word program, and she got a page for a placeholder in there. Um, that was a day in which there was a gentleman, Assemblyman Pedro Nava, who's a former Assemblyman who works with the Little Hoover Commission. He's the chair of that group, which I'd never heard of. Has anybody heard of this play thing? Okay. It was very, very impressive and if there's anyone who would bash the US from not having truly democratic institutions, they'd have to go. Talk to these people because they're made up of a wide swath of government employees. Regardless of what political party they belong to, they all get along and it's designed, the whole thing is designed. To have the widest possible range of inclusion into things that are happening locally. And they go and they take a look at police commissions and, you know, all these things that get established for, because of an event like a shooting or something. And there's going to be an oversight committee center. And he talked about this. It was just an amazing thing. And one of the things they've done recently was special districts. And part of, and tell me if I'm going on too much here, but part of the, I think, mission of this meeting was to. Put special districts as an entity front and center so that people knew more about them. And I sensed as I went through these two days, a real big effort for these folks to be. Encouraging and explaining and describing special districts to not only themselves, but to the general public. And Mr. Nava, who had looked at a bunch of special districts, I knew the Little Hoover Commission. Had nothing but great things to say about them and the way they operate and the way that they are a microcosm of the community, sort of the best. Form of local government, that's what he concluded. So that was what I tried to capture in his first page that day. The next day was much busier, even though it was a half day, and it had to do with presentations from the CSCA. And also the um. The National Special District Coalition NSDC about the state of a lot of bills. The National Special District Coalition NSDC about the state of a lot of bills that we're going through. And one of the interesting and potentially very productive exercises that we went through is at the room, which there was. Two, three hundred people broke into different tables, and when you came in that day to your table, your number. There would be your name and your other folks that were there, along with, you know, your local legislature, so Fitter Report and Tino had a name played there. And also Chris Holden had one there as well, the idea was that they would show up or their staff would show up. And you would get to lobby them for certain things that this, that the uh, CSDA wanted to do.
It's like speed dating, but for lobbying, it's like speed dating, but for lobbying.
Exactly, yes, basically, yeah, and since I was a newbie, they must have known that by the by the cheat sheet. I got the softball, and the softball was, we we wanted a support vote on making that that week. Uh, National Special District Week. We were just advocating for that, and really. And I'm happy to say that later that day, the Senate voted on the bill thirty-seven to zero to support.
Look what you got.
Here's the downside of the story, though, old and important, you know, never get shook. There's been a lot of others, actually, but we still were able to network and get our thoughts on paper and then turn them into their staff later on and so on. The concept was brilliant, that you would have your, you know, legislators right there, you could talk to them and, you know, tell these things. And all this was done under the shadow, this is where the hotel was, of the Capitol Building, it was right across the street, so it was really an interesting thing. And uh, it was still, it was very technical, presentations filled with language and, you know, wonkisms that I'd never really heard before, but, you know. Totally maturely, it was sinking in, it was attended by a wide variety of local institutions, water districts, mosquito districts, it goes on and on, so. You were never at a loss for an interesting conversation with somebody there, cuz they all worked in different, you know, areas and. And we do, and they were asking questions about, you know, how do you run a special district livelihood, which was nice. And then the uh, the couple of things that they teased out of their agenda were two that we've actually talked about before. They want a, they want as many CSDA members as possible to write to the legislators. Legislators uh, in opposition of the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act, and you might remember last summer. I started a couple of reports talking about an initiative, a ballot initiative, that it doesn't vote well for people to wanna do exactly what we did. When we went out to the community and got our, you know, two-thirds vote, and we came up with our money, our taxes that we're spending right now. That would shoot that in, and they were supposed to go on the ballot last, in twenty twenty-two, last year. But and they had the signatures to do it for the side of the way, now they're gonna put it on the twenty twenty-four ballot. Pardon me?
They think they'll get more turnout? No, that's my question.
There will, there will be higher turnout.
Yeah, I don't know what the reason was, to tell you the truth, but they're gearing up, that CSDA is gearing up to oppose it vigorously, so. That's something we'll keep an eye on and then deal with it as we be closer to that. The other item. That. Let me come back to that, because I'm, I'm seeing on my cheat sheet here. Um, I talked a minute ago about the idea that they were trying to promote special districts, and one of the big things that came up with this. Was that the national uh, special district, which I talked about, came up for the first time with. A meaning for the special district because, or definition, because often when money is allotted for special district expenditures and so on. They are, they are talked um, as a uh. They're often labeled as um. A non-government or. Oh, they call it a um, a general purpose unit of government, so they don't even tease out. Uh, special district as the recipient of money or grants or things, it doesn't have an identity. And so the um, the National Special District Coalition said, the term special district means a. Political subdivision of a state with specified boundaries created pursuant to general law or act of the state. For the purpose of performing limited and specific governmental or proprietary functions, except that it is not a school district. County, the city, a town, a township, a village, a parish, a borough, or other general purpose of unit of government. And I thought that was interesting and also important, because it's for the first time, it's apparently, special districts having real function and defined function. And they're trying to get them listed into actual legislation that comes through, so there were all these surprise. You know, pictures like that, that I saw throughout this today meeting that I went to, and it was really an interesting. You know, step forward in my education about special districts and how they work and they're run. So sorry to take up all that much time, but I would give this, you know, a B+, an A for sure, if legislators had shown up. I think that we need to attempt a single forward area for any able-bodied governors that can make it to that, we can do it, I think. Any questions?
No, just thank you so much for going, and I really enjoyed reading your, like, dispatch from the field, that was really fun, so thank you. I feel good that we have like an eye on what's happening, you know, in Sacramento, I think it's really. I I really appreciate every month that you keep us up to date with what's going on, so thank you so much.
Great.
I feel like I should add that um, something government-related, we received letters of support for the grant. Application process for round two from Senator Portin, two towns, Supervisor Barker, and Town Council.
Oh, nice.
So, thanks to them for.
Yeah.
Putting those letters together for us, I think that strengthens our um, applications. And kudos to David and Jennifer Pearson, who put in lots of work on those grants.
There's nothing further on government, we are moving on to unfinished business. Beginning with our redistricting, not redistricting, our districting process.
So, hello, um, there, okay, there you are.
One of us is gonna have to be Kristen, oh no.
So, hi, Kristen is here from Indy, and I will turn it over to her, as I am sure you all are familiar with where we are. In our districting process.
Hello, so. If you, i- if it works for you, I can share my screen here, and we can look at the new map. Oh, I think you have to give me permission to do that. Perfect, thank you.
You should be able to share now.
Perfect, okay. So, here we are nearing the end of this districting process um, that started all the way back. In January, and really for you all even earlier, because you adopted your resolution of intent. I think years before this, so um, congratulations for nearing the end of the process. Just a reminder to the public that we have held four public hearings. And there will be also a public hearing today, and hopefully. Um, the final map that you have before you will be adopted, um, but of course, if you do. Choose to. Make any other modifications, you can do that as well. And again, the first by trustee area elections will be held next year, so next year's election year. Um, so I took your feedback from the previous meeting and drew the green. D map, so this is another iteration. And the main decisions that you have to have before you this evening are, do you. Want to adopt these map boundaries? And if so, what uh, will be the election sequence? So, as you remember. Uh, trustee areas one, two, and three are unchanged here from the green map, the original green map. And it's four and five that we have tweaked a little bit to uh. Really unify a community of interest in the southern. Uh, part of Altadena that's unincorporated with the Pasadena um, mailing addresses, so. What you see that we've done is we've pulled the northern boundary of area four. Down from Altadena to Mendocino Street, and then we're pulling um. That other boundary there that's now at Hill was previously uh, over east at Allen. So we can look at that on the interactive map as well, uh, if you wanna see those changes. Side by side. Um, but primarily, the question that we didn't really get into last time is election sequence, so. For areas one, two, and three. Um, our election sequences, because each of those areas have one current trustee, the election sequences. Um, are simply assigned to those trustees' election year. It's really four and five where we have the questions, so. Um, four and five, you have to assign one of those areas to twenty twenty-four. And one to twenty twenty-six, and the reason for that is simply to keep the same number of. Elections per election cycle, to so to keep you staggered, right? So, the considerations um, for area four, which will be vacant. It does not have a current trustee residing there, is would you want to. Wait to hold that area's election until twenty twenty-six to give more time to recruit candidates? Or would you want to have that area for in twenty twenty-four? And since area five has two current trustees in it with different. Uh, election years, that's where it can get very confusing to think through, so. I did wanna show you this um, sequencing options, so depending on which year you would assign to area five. Um, would affect, you know, trustee Clark and trustee Andrews differently. Um, so. The first option would be, okay, if we're going to assign area five to. A um, twenty twenty-six election, right? Which would be the later election. Um, what happens for trustee Clark, of course, is uh, finishing your current term. In twenty twenty-six and um. Can run for reelection at the end of that term, right? So no effect for trustee Clark, but for trustee Andrews, if this is the. A twenty twenty-six area, then this is the bot- uh, and the term ends in twenty twenty-four, this is sort of the the bottom. Left quadrant here, um, where what happens is, is that. Trustee Andrews' term ends in twenty twenty-four, but because that area is assigned to twenty twenty-six, there's really. No seat to run for in twenty twenty-four, so there's not a seat to run for until twenty twenty-six, so. Um, that's one option, right? And then the other option is if area five is assigned to twenty twenty-four, right? Which would mean that trustee Clark is in a strange situation in the top right. Quadrant here, where there's two different options, so trustee Clark. If that area is assigned to twenty twenty-four, can either choose to run in twenty twenty-four. For that by trustee area seat, or simply complete uh, her term in twenty twenty-six. But then again, does not have a seat to run for until twenty twenty-eight. If that makes sense, so. It's confusing, but depending on where you, wh- where you assign area five. Then you get different options, so I will certainly stop and let you ask any questions for me. Um, and hopefully you can come to a decision. Um, GAVL will open a public hearing, um, and then the. Resolution in your, in your board packet um, can be updated with whatever election sequence you decide on.
Okay.
Okay.
So I don't have a GAVL, but I will officially open the public hearing into our district process. Let's talk about the map first, I think that'll be the easier part, I hope it'll be the easier part. Uh, so I'll just open the floor on the latest edition of the map itself.
I think the map looks great, I love it.
Everything you asked for.
Yeah.
It's all incorporated.
Yeah, I think it's perfect. No notes.
It looks good, too.
That's the most. It's really exciting.
See the kind of cool stuff that happens when you don't gerrymander? Anyway.
Yes, and I I will always be referring back to Altadena Library Board for being uh, such a forward-thinking board.
There you go.
To your point of special districts and democracy. Um, so now onto the fun part, who do we inconvenience and when?
Right, Terry, Terry and I have to go into the Thunderdome, and I don't, I don't know. Kristen, cuz I, I don't know if you understood what happened, but I didn't understand it at all.
Okay, so there's two options, right? There's the proposed election sequence here, and then there's the alternative. So you have to choose between those, and the only difference between them are areas four and five.
Totally get that.
Yes.
Okay, so if you go to the chart.
Yes.
Okay, now, which, so basically. There, your turn, were we not districted, your turn, cuz you ran last time in twenty, in twenty twenty, so you would be up in twenty-four. And I'd be up in twenty-six, right? So the right-hand column is basically me, and the left-hand column is you, Terry, right?
Exactly.
So now, which one of these is the. Proposed, the proposed sequence is the first row or?
It's the second, the second, uh, is it the first or the second? Good question, let's go back and look. It is the alternative, is the bottom row, and then the top row is the recommended. So they are in order at least, lines up.
So if, so basically, if we put area five on the twenty twenty-four ballot. Then we would be in a situation where. Basically. Would you both have to run? We would have to run against each other for the same seat, or. Yeah, yeah, we would stay there.
So, it becomes.
There are two options, right?
It's.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's Terry, so the basically the option is Terry can't run in twenty twenty-four, or you can't run in twenty twenty-six. It is, it's the way I understand it.
Is that right?
No, 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 so if you assign it to uh, twenty twenty-four, which is the recommended. Then Terry runs twenty twenty-four, doesn't have anything to think about, right? It's it's Katie, you have a lot to think about, right? Which is, do you want to. Run in the middle of your current term, which is at large, you wanna run for this by trustee area seat in twenty twenty-four? Or not, right? And just complete your term as usual, but then if you just complete your usual term in twenty twenty-six. Um, whoever was elected in in twenty twenty-four is gonna be there until twenty twenty-eight, right? So you wouldn't have another opportunity to run until then.
Unless I'm moved, yeah, exactly. Unless I'm moved, yeah, exactly. That makes total sense.
Right.
Um, okay.
I mean, heads and both of you can't, once twenty twenty-four hits, both of you can't. Sit on the board because there's only one spot available. No, we can't, I just can't run for the area five, so like, let's say. Terry, let's say you run for your seat again in twenty twenty-four, which would be fine. I can stay and finish my term in twenty-six, but in twenty twenty-six, there's no seat for me to run for cuz Terry's already in it. So then I'm done. Yeah, 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 so yeah. And then if I wanted to run for another seat, I could, but not until twenty twenty-eight, yeah.
Exactly.
Might want to to your break effort.
I mean, right, I. Yeah, I don't think that's a huge, I don't think that's a huge problem, like it's. Fine with me, I mean. I think it's kind of funny that like this whole process. As of me being districted out, I kind of like it, and I like there's something kind of karmically like satisfying about that. Um. But I think that's fine. I think it's fine.
Did you know in area four, there are forty-five percent rental?
See, that's why I'm so amped about area four, right? Because I feel like my my renter, my renters caucus will. You know, will continue, maybe I'll even, you know, if I get to stay until twenty-six. Um we can go down and convince somebody to. Do it, um. I think that's fine, I don't think it's a terrible thing for us to have an extra. Couple of years to recruit somebody for a vacant. Seat. Um. I also think that. You know. Yeah, I mean, I I think that represents the least amount of disruption, right? Cuz like. Yours your sequence stays the same, I finished the term that I filed for my last ballot, so like, fine, that seems. Fair to me.
Hold me, I understand, yeah, this is like or not.
Yeah.
I my term ends to twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
And then. So if I decide not to run. Let's say.
Right.
That. How much of that area will consent from that question, cuz you're still.
Yeah, so if you decide, right, if you decide not to run. Then what could be different, if I'm understanding Kristen's chart correctly, is I could say, okay, I'm gonna run, I'm gonna sit in my seat that I have now. And I'm gonna run for area five. And then if I.
You get elected.
If I get elected, I would resign.
Then it resets.
My old seat, and then it would reset. Cuz basically, basically, uh my seat needs to vanish. So that area four exists.
But then we appoint. Someone.
No, no, because cuz that would put, that would put somebody in seat five and twenty-four, right? Like if. But then there would.
Or there's a scenario which. Terry's seat would vanish next year. And the other option, and then that.
Yes.
Area four would elect him.
That's right.
But then you wouldn't have a seat to run for next year.
That's right.
So those are the two options. Either your seat disappears in twenty-six, or yours disappears next year.
Right.
I.
Right.
I think. Option A.
I think option A.
Because not only does it give. Two current trustees a year to kind of try and figure out what what they each individually wanna do. But then it buys us, like you guys said, more time. You know, to try and get the word out for area four, like, hey, like, you guys have your own thing now, like, somebody's gotta run, right?
Right.
Right, I think I asked before, but if. Nobody runs at all, and it just becomes an appointment.
Yeah, then we have a point.
The difference now is we'll have that one probably than the district.
Is that true?
We have to appoint within the district.
Wow.
Yeah. The only situation where that would not be true, I think, and Kristen is gonna have to shut my mouth on this, is if. We go with. Proposed sequence one. And I'm in the weird seat that doesn't exist anymore, but I were to resign before twenty twenty-six, I believe that seat would be reappointed for the unfinished. Part of that term at large.
Yeah, that that's correct.
It looks like a very, that would be the one.
Do that just for some like government.
I mean. Exception to the rules, right? That would be the only situation in which we would be. We would be in that scenario.
Wouldn't it be if any of you resigned because you were elected at large?
No, because once we move into the proposed election sequence. Then that overrides, right? Like basically.
It was how the seat was originally.
I think it's just for them because you have two people sitting at the same seat.
It just depends when, it depends when the resignation would occur, right? Um. If everyone resigned right now. You know? Then it would all be at-large seats, right? But um. If we go back here, we are gonna have three elections in twenty twenty-four, it just depends on which areas, so. If folks. Resign in twenty twenty-five, right? It would depend on. Whether or not their seat has already.
Right.
And and anyone that, you know, already switched over to buy trustee area or not.
Right, cuz like Jason, you decided twenty twenty-five, you wanted your resign, but your seat hadn't gone through. A by district election yet, then that would be an at-large.
Yeah.
Appointment.
Excuse.
It is.
Yeah, I'm like, can we please stop talking about resigning?
There'll always be three-two rhythm then though to the elections there.
Right.
Yeah. So I am not completely clear on things, but I like the option that gives more time to recruit.
Which which is the proposed.
Yeah. Okay.
So I. But. If we don't get anybody who wants to run, then we have to appoint, but it has to come from the district where nobody wants to run.
Right, right, right.
I would just say the last several times we've had to appoint, which I will state again unequivocally is not ideal. We do not want to be appointing people, it's not democratic, but um. We've had a pretty. Broad and diverse group of people who ultimately put in applications.
Right.
As they appointed.
With us.
Or from a broad, from a broad swamp about the Dina, like I I don't know all the addresses of everybody past time, it was from four, but. In general, people were kind of different areas.
Well, and I think that now that we have a little bit more lead time, right, if we put the. If we put the vacant one, if we put number four into twenty twenty-six, we have time. We know who the town council reps are for that area, we know, you know what I mean, like we could kind of.
Targeted mailers.
We can do some very, yeah, we can do some targeted recruitment that I think will. Be unlike what we have done in the past, which was sort of a broad base, like you should run for the L T library district, but. I mean, you know. I I think it will yield different results.
Okay.
Let's hope, yeah, my theory, yeah.
Yeah, one thing I forgot to report on. In my one for the Sacramento trip is that that, I think it's Piedmont Apartments or something versus the city of Santa Monica.
Oh, yeah.
For that, I mean, that's the whole reason we did this, right?
Which one case study that definitely motivated us, yeah.
That's going to the California Supreme Court.
It's still.
Is it really?
Yeah.
It, we ju- I just heard today that they have a hearing scheduled at the end of June, which means that there should be. At perhaps a decision in that case end of September.
Wild. Wild.
Talk about a waste of that fair.
Raising.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Okay, well, we will circle back under action items.
And. Let's quickly move on. Are we in our public hearing? What's happening? What's happening, Jason?
Until I close it, we are in our.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, and you can ask if you're, if any members of the public wanna make any comments on the. Uh proposal. And then you can close it if there's none. And then you can do the exact same thing when you get to your reso.
Cool.
So do we have any public comments?
Not received any.
Okay.
Not really, no.
Any comment from the gallery?
Okay.
Thank you all.
Yes.
Kristen, are you with us still for the resolution, or are you?
If you if you think you have questions and need me, I'm here, if not, I'm out. Yeah, I can stick around. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So then I will. Close the public hearing. Um. We will then move on to new business. And the first of which is review and approval of the library redistricting resolution. Um let's just remember included in that is two things, so the map. And then the secrets of elections that we just discussed. So. Um. This is approval of the map and the proposed. Election sequence.
Is that, so the yellow highlighted part is. Is saying.
It's the recommended.
It's the recommended, okay.
Yeah. It's just highlighted in case you decided to go with the alternative. So then we would have to change it, but you don't have to modify it as is.
Okay.
So any further questions or comments before I ask for motion to? Okay. Motion to approve.
So moved. And sent.
All right, I will do a roll call vote, trustee men.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Clark.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And that is an I vote for me. And I would like to extend a particular thanks to trustee Wilkerson for helping read our ad hoc committee.
Absolutely.
This is super exciting.
Yeah, that must sound heavy listening, everybody, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Kristen, we really appreciate.
Well done. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Um we'll see you in ten years.
That's right.
Awesome, see you then.
Hey, um. Yeah, like happy, happy, happy decision. Um new business, item B, a review and approval of the special tax lien rate. Action item starts on page sixty-nine. I'm assuming Nikki.
Yeah, and we just noticed that the resolution had two axes, so this is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero four. Alright, so um this agenda item has already gone through the C F D committee at their meeting on April twelve. Um. Per ordinance and by resolution, we have to annually determine the special taxes to be levied within community facilities district number twenty twenty dash one for the current year. Um so taking us back in time a little bit, last summer, we had to wait for the numbers to come out of L A county. To establish what the square footage was um as a community, so we could set the rate um to collect for the debt service payment. We all agreed that that was very last minute, and we would use the previous year's numbers to establish the rates moving forward, so that it can be built into the budget track process, which is what we've done this year. So we did take this to the C F D committee. Um. Let's see, I worked with Christine Drizzle of N B S uh to establish the budget for next year to be able to pay the debt service as well as administrative costs with that. You can find those numbers on page seventy-two of your packet. Um and then based on the square footage numbers that we had from last year, we were also able to set the rate um. Which is on in the resolution on page seventy. And as you'll notice, they're actually a little bit less this year, so last year the rate was per square foot for a single-family residential properties. Point zero four nine, this year they're point zero four eight, again, um based on the the budget that we need to collect to make the debt service payment. Um she did mention that when the numbers do get released by L A county, probably in, I think it was like late July, if they're substantially different than what we. Built this budget off of, we may have to call for a special meeting, but I highly doubt that will be the case, that we're pretty established. So we're recommending that you review and approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's wrong, too. Uh which includes fiscal year budget twenty-three, twenty-four and establish rates um. That gives us authorization to levy special taxes within our C F D twenty twenty dash one. Happy to answer any questions you might have. About that.
I just think it's important to highlight that. What we're approving. Or being asked to approve. Um is actually less than. Half. At least for the next year. Of. What? Of the maximum the voters authorized with measures.
Hmm.
Right, I think that's like really, really important to highlight um. And do in large part to the due diligence of. The various committees who played a role in this, as well as the community members of those committees.
I think all this is good, just like a Mary Meyer copy, I think the D is wrong, but I'm sure you guys will fix it before it gets signed. Do we know what the. Change was last year between. The numbers from the previous year and the real numbers, do you know what I'm saying, like, do you know what the delta was on that for last year?
I do remember us looking at it and they were so minor.
Okay.
I wanna say it was like eleven hundred dollars difference.
Oh, wow, okay.
Of the thirteen, almost fourteen thousand parcels.
Got it, okay, that's so, that's so much.
Super minor.
Alright, that seems.
And she compared to the previous two years, I think.
I I remember vaguely doing that, okay, yeah, I mean, I will be just, I will be interested just as a kind of curiosity what that. Ends up being and we, as we start to get kind of a sense of. That change over time, but yeah, that seems right to me.
Can I just? Flag something for, I don't know if this would be the C F D committee to. Just have on their radar um. And I don't wanna start. A firestorm, but. I would, it would be helpful to know in advance what happens if a particularly large parcel of land that is currently. Uh a small business.
E G a commercial parcel.
Changed over to. I guess it would be an educational. Property that probably would not pay taxes.
No, it's still a commercial, still a commercial property, right? Like even if. Even if. A hypothetical parcel of seven hundred acres gets bought, like.
For people who haven't been paying attention. Sixteen acre Nucio nursery. Right? Which is a a business right now. Uh is is, I don't know where it's at in the process, but essentially under consideration for that to become. Part of. A private schools.
Hmm.
Whatever, I think there's a sports complex, there's some other stuff, they're claiming that are part of it, I know there's a community tomorrow. Sixteen acres in Altadena is a huge freaking chunk of land.
Yep.
It is.
And I think. It would be just prudent for us to know what the impact of that significant of a change.
Hmm.
Would be if it's, I mean, it may not be a significant change impact on this, I don't know, but we should just know that that's.
Well, cuz the question is gonna be, right, for the commercial property, is it assessed on. Built square footage, right? Cuz it's ten thousand square feet, not acreage. Hmm. So it's it's built square footage, which anything that's being proposed would involve more built square footage. But what I'm not sure is how certain things count under occupancy, you know what I mean, like if you're. Paving something or you're turning it into a. Kind of square or something, does that count towards your developed square footage total or not?
But are the charters, like the charters are are.
If you own the land, it doesn't matter if you're nonprofit, you still have to pay property taxes. Like, I can ask, nobody gets to skip paying property taxes.
Or you don't, or.
It should, it's such a big chain, I'm just. It just hit me that that's something we should just be thinking, like, we should have an answer to that. Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay. So can I get a motion to approve? The lien rates?
So much. I I feel like I've got a. It matters, doesn't it?
I'm second.
Second. Alright. Also, we'll take a roll call vote, trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Clark.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkinson.
Aye.
And then as an I vote for me as well. Thank you to the C F D committee for doing all the legwork on that one. Okay, um now we get on to the two budget items, so the first is. Review and approval of the salary schedule and cost of living increase. Uh action item, this is on pages seventy-three and seventy-four. Um. So just a reminder, um. You know. A year ago, we took a real big step when we were. a year ago, we took a real big step when we were kind of in the heart of you know, inflationary period and approved a seven percent quota for staff. Um I'm frankly proud that we were able to do that and do it responsibly within our budget. So we are uh proposing four percent cola for this year. Um and in addition, we'll step seven and eight, uh which will be two and a half percent increases. Which is a bit less than the rest of the schedule, definitely around five percent, Nikki. Um you can see here what the fiscal impacts would be. And the budget committee is recommending by yes, so. Further questions or comments?
The question I had, one question that was that it was a four percent cost of living increase, so we wouldn't do it. As I recall, way back in the day when we first started doing this. A lot, it was like a, an April or a February month that was mostly widely used for that. Is that, is that ring a bell? And I just wondered if that lined up with any of the.
Yeah, so we look at the CPI, the Consumer Price Index um for LA, the LA area for March of the year.
It was March.
Okay, so the CPI for March twenty twenty-three was three point seven.
Okay.
Which was a drastic fall.
Yeah.
I was surprised when I pulled it up.
Others? Pretty straightforward. I expect more questions on the budget, so. Can I get a motion to approve the cola and salary schedule adjustment?
I move to approve the cola salary schedule.
Second, trustee Wilkinson. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, trustee Lynn. Trustee Andrews. Trustee Clark. Trustee Wilkinson. And then as an I vote for me as well. Thank you, everyone. Okay, now to the fun part. Uh review and approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed budgets. This is, uh starts on page seventy-five of your package. I don't, I mean, I don't have anything further to add other than kind of the highlights I had for twenty, I don't, Nikki, do you have any other highlights that you want to make sure to mention? Or trustee Lynn?
No, I just like, as you can see on my report, um I thought some of the bigger items to point out through the report itself was the four percent cost of living adjustment, which is eighty-four thousand four hundred um for the fiscal year impact, um as well as uh we were asked to bring something forward since we uh established an unfunded accrued liability policy last year. Um I have spoken with Andrew Flynn, but also um with our accountants and they still believe in Christie's online. If you want to ask her that we're better off putting money in class. But we added a line to the budget to designate money for that purpose. So our recommendation right now is, and again, because it's not put in the one fifteen trust, if for some reason we needed to use that money for other things, unexpectedly, it would still be liquid. So originally, Christie and I put seventy-five thousand in, but that was going to give us hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred dollars to put into reserves. And based on recommendation from the budget committee, we decided to move an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars into that line. So what that would look like is, once this budget is established for next fiscal year, I put that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in a subaccount in class, because we can create as many subaccounts as we want. And we let it grow for that purpose. And then when it feels like things are looking better in terms of paying down the unfunded accrued liability or it would make more money in that trust and interest, we move it over. So that, that was one of the bigger items to point out, because we hadn't had a separate line for them in the past.
That is line twenty-one.
Um and then the other thing, as Jason mentioned, and there were questions about it, so we expanded greatly in this report was um describing why we decided eleven hundred versus what we were paying currently, which is about seven hundred and forty-five dollars a month towards employee health benefits. Um Chrissy and I, like she did some research of other government agencies she worked with. Currently, in our personnel policies, we've written that we'll pay, we'll cover the lowest cost individual plan. Which, so this year, that was six hundred and eighty dollars um. Right? But and what that means is that almost all of the staff, there's a few that uh took advantage of that plan, but almost everybody is paying something out of every paycheck towards their health benefits. So she looked at a couple of agencies that paid like, for example, ninety percent of the lowest family plan. So her and I sort of ran the numbers and what we decided was to look at our lowest cost family plan and looked at what sixty percent would be. And then adding in um dental and vision coverage for all employees and that gives you about eleven hundred dollars. Um and if you look at the chart that's on page seventy-six, what that means is only three employees will still have to pay towards benefits, so almost everybody that's paying right now won't. Next year, yeah. So it, it really was a benefit to all employees, not just like people that need to have a plus one or a family plan. And looking at the fiscal impact, what it's looking like right now is approximately thirty-three thousand eight hundred, which really isn't too bad. But that's based on the assumption that the staff will maintain whatever plan level that they're in. It could go up depending on if someone says, hey, I think I'm going to choose this other plan that costs a little bit more because I know I have more of an allocation to do so. Um but again, we wouldn't know that until the plans come out for next year and people make their selections.
Right.
Uh so that's kind of the, the why, how behind what was selected. Any questions about that?
Good. So we provided enough information. I don't, no, that's really helpful. I think that makes a ton of sense and I'm really, I really appreciate seeing us move some of our thinking around reserves in a creative way, right? Like, we can put stuff over here, put it over there, we can find ways to kind of push the whole salary schedule north, find ways to improve benefit coverage for folks. You know, my not so secret dream is that we figure out how to do some more generous, like pay family leave kind of stuff at some point. But I, I think that this is, this is smart and it's moving in the right direction.
Well, and we do have six weeks of paid family leave.
No, I know, but yeah.
Longer, yeah.
Um the one thing, the one other thing I'll just point out, because when I first looked at this package of stuff before the budget committee meeting, I had like an almost heart attack, because there's like, there's a line item somewhere that makes it seem like there's a significant cut to uh per, per single books budget.
Oh, no.
But when you look at the overall library materials, really what it is, is it's a shift, right? Because we're expanding our footprint out into the community. So you have a shift towards the second mobile library. You have, you know, anticipation of vending machines, right? Um I think, just like everything else in the world, I think the data is showing that the shift to digital during the pandemic, there is a certain level of permanence there that requires also a shift to greater funding of the digital uh access that, that our community has, and so. Uh you know, after kind of really seeing the details of where it's actually shifting to, I, you know, I'm much more comfortable with some of those changes personally.
I think this all looks really good. I mean, our budgets have gotten increasingly complicated. Over the, I'm thinking about some of the, the lackluster looking kind of budgets that we got, you know, some four or five years ago. Um and these are, these are great. I mean, I just, I also really appreciated like the line by line kind of variance report version of why what's happening is happening. I mean, I don't really have any questions. I think it makes a ton of sense. Everything seems reasonable to me. Um I was so excited to see our direct mail costs in there, so we can keep sending postcards out. I think it's going to make a huge difference. And it looks good.
And I will point out, we're continuing to conservatively budget.
Yeah.
We only put in a two percent increase in all revenue lines, basically. I do think the anticipated interest is low, but again, I'd rather come in higher.
Yeah.
Um with more savings.
Yeah.
Uh but lots of kudos to Christie with ideally.
Yeah.
A lot of time talking about this budget, so I think it looks really good. We're very fortunate that we're not reliant on several other taxes, but I think some of the municipalities are going to be hurting, you know, in the next few years.
Agree.
Other questions or comments? Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget?
Oh, moved. Second.
Okay, uh roll call vote, trustee Lynn.
Hi.
Trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Clark.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkinson.
Hi.
And that is an I vote for me as well. Thank you, thank you very much, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, buddy.
Thank you, budget, exactly.
Another successful year ladies ahead of us. Um so last item under new business, review and approval of the updated library materials borrowing policy. Starting with age eighty-eight. Now I see we have our amazing assistant director to lead us in this conversation.
Good evening, everyone. So to establish a consistent method of handling our borrowed materials, we thought it was a good idea, we as in myself and the staff, thought it was a good idea for us to revisit our borrowing policy. Newly named library materials borrowing policy. This policy went through the hands of several groups of staff. So first it went through the public services librarians, then it went through the hands of the EDI team. And then it went through the public services team as a whole, just to make sure that we were all on the same page and that everything um could be consistently and uniformly enforced when it comes to um things like lost and stolen library cards, um what we define as good neighbor status. Um just all things associated with our, with the borrowing of our materials. Um the last time this policy was updated was January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. So again, we just thought it was a good idea to make sure that we were being clear and consistent with um the handling of our materials. So staff recommend that the board approves this policy and that concludes my report. Any questions?
I had a small one on um youth community, community card. So they're essentially like the same amount, right? Except for one has a different requirement on what to get, is that right?
On how to obtain it.
Yeah.
I had a, just a process question. It's just some curiosity, not really to do with the policy. So as I'm thinking about like the curiosity connection, kind of going around town more, is it possible for people to, if they've say gotten a digital card online, to come up and like swap it out from in there? Or a high, or do they have to physically come into the library?
Nope.
That's.
Bring cards out with us.
That's really cool. I figured, but I was just curious about that. That's really cool.
You're curious about it.
I was, and Ashley made the kind of show.
For fees now, the, the check line is tenfold, so we're not accepting checks. Is that what that means?
That's correct.
I'm not going to say that one.
We used our whole brains in that redistricting.
So library cards, they don't expire?
I was, they expire if you don't check anything out.
Correct.
Basically, otherwise you have them, but.
Yes. Is that new? I mean, I, I'm not sure, because I checked these out, but was.
I mean, we put a, a, a date there, but we usually pick a date that's so far out that it's crazy. Could just, because we have to put a date in the record. Um but no, as long as you're using your card, checking out materials.
Does that include your, the online things as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just interested about the process, so if anybody exceeds these limits, you know at checkout, right? So your enforcers, where you can't have that or whatever, right there at the desk, is that right?
Um when someone exceeds their limit, something kind of pops up at you, like this person already has fifty items. You can override it, like say you have a mom standing there and you just want more foot bones.
That's a really good answer.
When you got little ones, it's hard to say no.
Yeah, that's true.
Except for mine, because my books. He likes trampoline, so it'll all.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve? Second, and a second. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, trustee Lynn.
Hi.
Trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Clark.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkinson. Alright, and that is an I vote for me as well. When we, that takes care of our new business. Um we don't have any items under governance, I'm correct? Right? Um no correspondence. Do we have any announcements or planning items? Um I will just remind folks, uh since there is some uh Juneteenth events coming up, I will also remind folks of the um Juneteenth on Juneteenth. The uh ceremony uh for the placement of the Robert Owens plaque at uh the intersections of Brown Mountain Trail and Alprecho Trail, if anybody wants to go for a little hike or a little bike ride that day, I believe it's at eleven AM. Um and it's uh the effort's been done in coordination between a local trail work group called Roll Lights Respectable Citizens Club and the Altadena Historical Society, so that should be very, very cool. And who else?
I have a question.
Yes.
For the public comment that we had, what do we? Do we discuss? Do we take that as an action with the next one?
We generally don't discuss comm, public comment, and I think it's I think partly a Brown Act issue, because in order for us to discuss an item, it has to be agendized.
Right.
Right? So what I would say is, the way that you would deal with that is if any of the board members, right, or obviously the staff. Um you know, part of announcements and planning is if anybody has a proposed future agenda item. So any one of us or staff could place something on the agenda item for a future agenda to re- revisit uh that item. Or the issues that he, he raised. I, I would just take the opportunity just to make sure that uh anybody watching or, or whatnot, uh just remind folks that we still do have an active, a whole entire section of our website that is still active and updated. That directly addresses a, a lot of those, those issues. Okay, uh with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
And we are adjourned at six fifty-five P M. Thank you for an extremely productive meeting, everybody.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Jason.